We'd like to call the Town Council meeting to order on September 18, 2019. So I'll call it order. First item is public allegiance.
Public allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you recall?
Counselor Cludier.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Foley.
Here.
Counselor Caterina.
Here.
Counselor Donovan.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Here.
Chairman Hayes.
Here. Item four on the agenda is general public comment for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. So if anybody would like to make public comment, come to the podium, please. Just name and address.
My name is Betsy Gleistine. I'm from 14 Long Meadow Road, Scarborough, Maine, 04074. Good evening. George Packer of The Atlantic recently wrote, "Watching your children grow up gives you a vivid image of the world you're going to leave them." I'm not here to talk about the whole world. I'm here to talk about our world, Scarborough, Maine, and the community we're building, not just for our children, but for residents of all ages. I'm running for town council to champion, protect, and preserve the unique character of Scarborough that is evolving in ways that I'm not sure we fully understand. What is our town character? In conversations with Scarborough residents.
Mr. Chair.
Themes have emerged.
Mr. Chair, it's my understanding we aren't... Public comment is not a time to run for office and to do political speeches from the podium.
Sorry, I had... Mr. Cludier, I think you made your announcement during a town council public comment, and I think Mr. Hamel also did it, so there seemed to be some precedent, so...
Well, that's not for you to answer. It's... I'm asking the chair, and I'm asking...
Yeah, tell them what has been our past.
I'm trying to think what the policy is. I think on occasion candidates have mentioned it in the course of general comments, but I don't recall it's been the focus of their comments, their candidacy. So I don't think there's any clear guidance in that regard.
I guess what's the will of the council?
I don't have a problem with her speaking. I don't recall making a speech announcing my candidacy either, but...
I... She's announcing candidacy, but she's also speaking about Scarborough and things that she's observed about the town, so I'm all for it. Counselor Foley?
I... Unless we have a policy that explicitly says that someone can't do that, then I have no reason to think we should stop it.
And I am also in favor of it. I mean, we've had too many examples, I think, where the public doesn't have an opportunity to speak, and this is one of them. So I think that we need to let her continue her comments in the spirit of public comment.
Counselor Caterina?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with Ms. Gleistine making comments. I do have a problem with someone announcing that they are a candidate for town council from that particular podium. And some of it, I mean, I can't off the top of my head, other than we have our own policy as counselors, that we will not, from here, you know, sit here and go, "Well, I'm a candidate for this, and I'm a candidate for that, and we will not support candidates as in our role as town councils," which I know is different. To me, it's just the color of it. It doesn't look good. It doesn't sound good. Because this, this whole space is a place for us to conduct the business of the town, not to conduct the business of campaigns. That's just where I'm coming from.
Any other comments or questions? So I think with sort of the flavor that you've gotten, is kind of if there's additional things you'd like to say?
Absolutely. Thank you. What is our town character? In my conversations with Scarborough residents, themes have emerged. We cherish our active, engaged residents of all ages, our great schools, outstanding sports, boosters and activities. We love the access we enjoy to nature. We appreciate the business and civic and religious organizations that support us, and I hear great praise for our public safety and other town services. I have heard a few things we don't want to become: a bedroom community for Portland, or the town with the greatest debt per capita in southern Maine. Folks are concerned about gridlock traffic and our degradation to convenient access. And I hear concerns about affordability. Will I be able to afford to live here? That's part of our town character, too, affordability. Our website says Scarborough is one of the fastest-growing towns in Maine. Perhaps so, but I ask why, at what cost, what type of growth, what are our priorities? We can't... What can we and our neighbors afford? What growth is required to support our level of spending? Do we want to grow less and spend less? There are not easy answers to these complex questions, as you well know, and I certainly don't claim to be the smartest person in this room. But when making a decision, I hope that everyone will listen to all key stakeholders, residents, business owners, elected officials, and our town employees, and make decisions in a framework of asking the big question, how will this impact our town character? Ultimately, we have a great community, and I hope that Scarborough residents will take an opportunity with the upcoming elections to think about just slowing down a little bit and taking a breather and figuring out where we're headed. And I'd quickly like to add a comment about our ongoing revow concerns. I really applaud that you're holding a workshop on October 2, and I urge residents to reach out to town officials and candidates to discuss the issue. We've seen excellent professionalism from our town employees during this process, but by almost all measures, this revow represents the town falling short of the duty to provide a majority of residents with predictable tax rates. As someone said to me, "I can't walk into Hannaford and tell them, 'The town says my property is worth a whole lot more. Please give me free food.'" It just doesn't work that way. So I applaud that you're going to do this workshop, and I plan to follow up with some additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak this evening?
I'm Susan Hamel, Free Bay Street, Pine Point. And I'd like to talk about the reevaluation again. I'm sure most... There are many people on the council who would just like this issue to go away, but I don't think it's going to quiet down. After all, we'll be reminded about it in just about a month when we're paying our tax bills, and then again in March. But I'm here to ask that more information be provided on the outcome of the revaluation. What is the total change in valuation for the town? Why is this a big secret? I have not seen any statistical summary of any kind for the revaluation data. I'm being asked to pay this town a very large sum of money next month, as every homeowner in this town is being asked to pay their taxes, yet the town has not provided any information other than the committed values list. I'd like to see figures on how many homeowners received new assessments, which were higher, lower, or unchanged, in terms of total numbers of properties broken down by neighborhood, broken down by the magnitude of the change, say, in deciles. I'd like to see the mean and median change as well. And I'd like to see this information by neighborhood, by its size of home, size of lot, type of home, year built, and the price of the home. I would also like to see statistical measures, which show that the valuation model that the town used was actually valid. I'd like to see the median sales ratio and the coefficient of dispersion. And I'd like to see these measures for the data sliced and diced, as it should be, by neighborhood, size of home, size of lot, type of home, year built, and price of home. These are standards that are used everywhere, and what I'm asking for isn't unreasonable. What I'm asking for is basically if you look at the city of Bath, at their website, their assessing site, and the results of their assessment, and they have page after page of all the statistical information available for anybody. Every homeowner asks himself the question, "Am I being valued fairly?" And the answer to this question comes from looking at values of other homes in the area, other homes which are similar, as well as similar homes which have been sold. The answer also comes when you compare how your change value, how your value changed, and how values changed overall in your area and in other areas of town. But sorry, that seems to be too much to ask the town right now. Finally, I want to talk about the property card. I don't think it's too much to ask the town to send it out to all residents. We don't seem to have a problem sending out the bill or sending out one piece of paper with the old and the new value. The validity of the entire valuation process depends on the accuracy of that property description. Do we care about that or not? The cards should have been sent out back in August with the proposed assessment, but should we correct the error or not? What good is the property card without the explanation of how to read it? What are all those codes on a card, anyway? What's the difference between typical old-style and modern when it comes to kitchens and bathrooms? And how is the grade of construction a key determinant of building value? How is that determined? Without an explanation, the card is of limited value. As a homeowner and taxpayer in this town, I want and expect more. I want to see the basic data, and I deserve it. When I get a big bill or an unexpected amount, like anyone else, I look at the detail breakdown, and I want that. I want to do the math. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public, general public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll close that agenda item. Next item on the agenda are the approval of the minutes of September 4 regular town council meeting and September 10 special town council meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion or comment? Seeing none, all those that approve the minutes. It's unanimous. Thank you. There are no adjustments to the agenda. I've signed the treasurer's warrants. And the next item is item eight, a non-action item, and it's an update from the Scarborough Historical Society on the schoolhouse restoration project. Good evening.
I'm Becky Delaware. I asked, because of the support that you have given us on this project, I asked that I be on the agenda tonight so that I can update you on what we've accomplished so far. I have some pictures here of the things we have attempted so far. This summer, we've really been amazed at how fast things have gone for us. We expected a lot more surprises than we got. The first thing we did was we had our well checked by Stanley Hillik. They deepened it from 68 feet to 200 feet. They removed hand pump parts from the well, and they put a new well cap on gratis. We really appreciate that. We had a structural engineer, David Martin, offer his services gratis to us, and he has given us advice, confirmed what we've planned, and drawn some structural plans for us. We've also had the septic system checked by Advanced Leach Field. We found that the local squirrels have been using the septic system as a storage system for them. So that needs to be cleaned at some point. And we also found that we don't have a leach field, and we need to put one in. We also had Steve Ross come and survey the land and put pins in so the schoolhouse can go back exactly where it was before we had it moved. On the second week of July, Mary and Son came and began the process of jacking and supporting the building so it could be jacked up and, at the request of our excavation person, moved back. That ran into a problem almost immediately, because where we wanted to move it, there were trees. But Scarborough Public Works came to our rescue and cleared the area so that we could move the building back. Next problem was the porch on the front was no longer attached to the building, so it had to be repaired immediately or taken off. We looked at the construction and decided it would be best to take it off and rebuild it later. Mary's had suggested that we needed two steel beams to support the building sufficiently. As we got into it, it was determined by our structural engineer, Ed Mary, and our excavation person, and our foundation person, that we needed the third beam to support it. We then had Jeff Greenleaf do the excavation, and it was a big relief to us to find that he didn't hit ledge. That was a big concern for us, that if we did, it would limit what we could do. It's all sand. We also had a few worries at the time when the foundation was going in, if we could fit everything into the back part that we wanted to. We were trying to move as much of the modern stuff to the back of the foundation so it wouldn't show from the front. And our structural engineer stepped in and drew the plan and said, "You put this here, this here, this here, and this here, and everything fits," which was great. We had the electrical conduit, electrical conduit put in by Jeff Greenleaf, and he tarred and backfilled the foundation. Then we came to the obstacles. We should have known, but we were too optimistic. The sills were dry-rotted. Not completely. There was a place here, and a place here, and a place here, and we thought, "Oh, we can patch it." Well, we got looking at the patching process, and it would be better to replace them. So we have to replace all the sills. The back addition, we knew water had got into the wall. We didn't realize how much damage it had done. It had not only taken out the entire sill, it had taken out the entire wall. So we have an opening here right into the schoolhouse. As we looked at the other two walls, we found that they weren't in that great a shape either. So at this point, we need to take the back addition off, and hopefully we'll cap it this fall and fix it in the spring. I want to thank you for your support on this project. We certainly wouldn't have gotten as much done as we have if you hadn't supported us. I also want to make a personal thank you to Brian Longstaff. He has been great with us. He's helped us. He's cooperated with us, and he's made sure that we've got our bases covered. I'm hearing stories from other towns who have done similar projects, that they get one part all done, and then whoops, they should have done something else that was covered in the audience, ordinance, or codes, and they had to tear it out and redo it. Thankful to Brian, that he has said, "Now, look, you need to do this. You need to plan for that." And it's been a big help to us that he has supported us in that way. We also are trying to use Scarborough businesses as much as we can to keep the resources in town. The ones that we've used outside of Scarborough are ones that have been recommended by Scarborough businesses for us to go to. So we're trying to support the town as well as get our project done. If you have any questions, I will try to answer them. But I just wanted to give you an update of, we went full steam ahead and then ran into a brick wall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. So I think the next item on the agenda is order number 19068, 7 p.m. public hearing with the planning board and the town council on the proposed second contract zone amendment on Larrabee Farms from Grandon Aggregates LLC. And I think the process is a little different than what we've done before. I think we'll move down to the table. It's sort of a joint conversation. There will be a presentation by the applicant, followed by comments from the staff, and then sort of open discussion among the members, and moving toward, at the end of it, a decision of the town council about three different sort of ways to proceed. So we'll kind of, I'm sure, we'll be guided through the process. So I think with that, we reconvene down at the table. Take your nameplate if you would, just so colleagues... The gang's all here, so does Pete.
Gang's all here. Y'all ready?
This is on?
Yep. What's that, Ms. Jones? Good evening. My name is Larry Groden, with our big Groden Sons on behalf of Grandon Aggregates. Thank you for having me here. So about a month or so ago, we did this sort of thing in front of just the planning board, but part of the process is having this joint meeting as an update. So I'll start kind of 30,000 feet and drill my way down just to kind of give people some background to this project. But ultimately, we're requesting a small contract zoning amendment. So, but I'll kind of back up from there and kind of work back in history, just because I assume that the majority of the folks here weren't really involved with the initial permitting of this project. So if you go back 40 or 50 years, a lot of this property, particularly the eastern part of the property, was an old Santa Gravita that was opened up. I heard by Desenzos, I think, but I'm not positive, but it's really irrelevant. And then really just left mostly unclaimed and unreclaimed and just kind of sat dormant for decades. And then back in the early 2000s, we kind of looked at that and started looking at the potential for wetlands mitigations to offset impacts on other sites. So for example, the first one we did was a large mitigation project for the Gorm Bypass. So we created 13 to 14 acres of wetlands that used to be unreclaimed gravel pit, and now it's reclaimed just in a non-traditional way. In a non-traditional way, it was either just grow some grass and put some houses in there or whatnot. So we took a very different approach, which did not meet any of the town's zoning ordinances, hence the contract zone. So in the early 2000s, probably 2004, we started talking to the town on the concept, started getting some steam in '05, and then in 2006, we had a signed contract zone with the town to do this, you know, excavate some additional soils to get down to the water table to make the wetlands work. And, you know, prior to this, we did lots of research with more materials and hydrology, because you've got to have the water to make the wetlands, obviously. So that went pretty well. But shortly thereafter, we're back in front of the town for an amendment, because to help speed up the process, what we wanted to do was be able to kind of bring in some materials to help make spec materials for a lot of our construction sites that we do. So it was agreed upon in 2008, just a couple of years later, to kind of expand some of the functions of the, you know, the... Okay, so this is Route 114, up in here, and then over way to the left is Beach Ridge Road. So, just to kind of get you oriented on where this project is in the town. And the project is, I should have used a different map, and I meant to update it, but it's all of this colored area, as well as all of this area over here as well. So, it's even bigger than what this shaded area is. So, all of this area is part of the project. So, and just as it relates to the town, here is some existing town-owned conservation areas, you know, the marsh obviously being the single biggest one, but ours is the red one up towards the top. So, it kind of, you know, just kind of gives you an overview of what the town's, there's really nothing up in that area except a small little project right here that the town owns currently, and this abuts right up to it, which is nice. And then, the southern part, right in this whole area, abuts the Nun Such River. So, end game is when this project is 100% complete, this will all be in conservation in perpetuity, similar to these other projects. So, I think it will really round out the holdings of the town as far as conservation land and whatnot, you know, as, you know, we have a bond coming up, but, you know, so obviously, the town feels very strongly about that. So, this kind of gives you a good picture of how this project fits in. Some additional info, just to give you kind of a bigger picture, is, you know, we're over 300 acres, this entire project. 95 of it was existing wetlands, over a mile of frontage on the Nun Such, which we talked about. We talked about historical use a little bit. And then, so this is a timeline, which really maps out the last, you know, 13 years of the project. So, we've kind of talked about the first part of it. So, you know, 2006, we had the original, then we had the Gorm Bypass, we had our second one was the Cabela's site, that was a fairly significant creation area. The amendment in '08, '09, we had another project that was built, you know, over 100 acres for the jet port expansion. And then, our latest one was 2012. It's been pretty quiet since then. State has kind of changed the rules a little bit as far as wetland mitigation. So, haven't had any big projects lately, got a couple irons in the fire. So, and then, so, and then in 2017, that's when we had, so basically, when we create one of these projects, it's required by the town, main DEP, and US Army Corps of Engineers that we, after we build it and design it and build it, that we have to monitor it for 10 years regularly and make sure that it's doing what it's supposed to do. So, in 17, we had our first, you know, the final checkbox done, everything was done to satisfaction. Also in 17 was the last quarry blast that we had in there, because we were not only digging out sand, but also rock. So, that's been done for the last couple of years. And then, we've also got, last year, the Cabela's site was signed off, so that is, you know, 100% complete. It's met all the criteria for all the agencies. And then, the final sign-off for the jet port is pending, likely will happen later this year. So, the final letter and documentation to all the agencies has gone in, leaving just the last smaller settler screen that's still midstream, or about halfway through with that. So, some of the history from now is, so talking this spring with Jay and the planning staff is, so when we made the amendment back in '08, so the original contract zone in 2006 had a 20-year time span. And then, so when we said, "Well, if we can kind of change how we're doing it, we can shorten up the time," which it did work, but we kind of lost track of time, both the town and us. And that was partly our fault. We had some personnel change, so technically, our 10-year window has lapsed. And so, that's why we're for you with the amendment proposal. So, basically, we'd already, even before we realized that we overlooked some of the timeframe of the agreements, we had already started changing the functions of our operation, you know, bringing, not bringing in more material. My goal is to have the majority of the kind of our day-to-day earth-moving functions done by the end of this year, probably be some roller over in the next year, but we're not bringing more material in, we're trying to just get it out at this point. So, talking with Jay, he thought maybe the simplest solution is, okay, let's just ask for, you know, a small extension as far as, you know, trying to get all the piles and all the aggregate-related stuff out, you know, say by, you know, the end of next year at the very latest. I foresee the majority of it being done this year. But, what we'd really like to see is, it's a great project, you know, if this is built the way it's designed with, because we still have about 15 or 20 acres of wetlands creation, as well as the surrounding preservation left. So, we'd really like to be able to finish the project, you know, by closing it out with the wetlands creation, as opposed to just the traditional, I think aesthetically it would be nicer for the town. So, it's kind of a two-pronged request. We'd like to have a little more time to, you know, get the, you know, the dirt-moving functions done, and then, you know, is it as easy just going back to the original 20-year agreement that we had back in 2006, so, you know, or something to that effect, you know, like at least a few more years, or call it five, or, you know, whatever the will of the town is. But, we do think it's doable. It's just, like I said, some of the rules have changed with the state as far as people's options, developers' options with wetlands mitigation, so, but I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it makes the project viable by any stretch. So, that is the basic request, is just a pretty straightforward amendment. Worked with Jay on the wording. So, that's our 30 or 40-year background, and I think that's all I had. So, I don't know if there's any questions from the town, from you guys, or Jay would like to say anything first?
I think maybe Jay has, you know, at least the outline, this kind of presentation by the applicant, and some comments from you, and then kind of open it up for questions.
Absolutely, sure. Yeah, so the memo I put together is really just sort of echoing what's in the ordinance to help guide us. So, Tom, did you have anything, or do you want me to jump right in?
Please go.
I'm happy to do so. So, Mr. Grandin just gave you a pretty good background on the project, so I won't, I'll sort of dispense with that. But as was noted, you know, it really did come, it came to our attention this spring that the contract zone amendment, you know, that shortened this timeframe, we had gone past that 10 years. And so, you know, Mr. Grandin and I got together and had a good conversation. I said, "Look, okay, we're currently in violation of the contract zone ordinance, but what can we do to remedy this, to make things right?" And I think one of the things that my staff, Jamelle and I, were able to do was go out on the site with Mr. Grandin and see sort of the aggregate work that's being done. And, you know, I was very impressed by the site. So, one of the things that, you know, I would just sort of say is that while there are currently compliance issues with the contract zone and the timing, the work on the site has been done satisfactorily. So, you know, all the wetlands mitigation work, if anyone's had an opportunity to go out to the lands that are currently open at the end of Larrabee Farm Road, it's a really great example of wetlands creation in the state, and I believe this is one of the only projects, if not the only project in the state, that's created a man-made vernal pool that's actually functioning year after year. It's, they've really done a nice job of that. But, you know, again, we recognized in the spring that all these good things still don't remedy the non-compliance with the contract zone. So, that's really what we're here to talk about tonight, is what, you know, what is the will of the council in terms of the remaining? I think it's some 50 acres or so, I may have the number wrong, of where additional wetland creation areas could be. You know, and is it, you know, worth the town's sort of patience, if you will, to wait to try to get those wetlands created before having the conveyance to the town? And then, we'd have that added benefit for the community. And so, I think as Mr. Grandin said, it is a fairly straightforward request, and I think we, also with the sort of what's being written into this contract zone, is that by the end of next year, as Mr. Grandin mentioned, that all that aggregate will be off the site. And then, it's just a matter of marketplace. I think that's one of the things that maybe hasn't been mentioned, is when this contract zone was originally adopted, the wetlands mitigation happens when projects in another area of town, or in the state frankly, as was mentioned, Cabela's or the jet port, have impacts on wetlands, they need to mitigate those. And so, the DEP, it used to be that really their only option was to create wetlands elsewhere. Shortly after this contract zone being adopted and the project getting underway, the DEP created a new rule where folks could actually just pay an in-lu fee that goes to the DEP, and then they use the funds for other purposes, conservation-related purposes. So, I think that probably hindered some of the marketplace for wetlands creation. So, yeah, I think that's about what I wanted to touch on.
Yeah, I'll just add a personal comment. I was generally aware of this, but never been to the site. The spring when Jay brought it to my attention, I had the pleasure of going out there, and I was just simply amazed by the restoration in particular, and the sort of public access and certain conservation opportunities that are afforded, far better than just the kind of the wild land, if you will. And so, I appreciate firsthand kind of the finished product and how that could be a real resource to this community for decades.
Only last thing I wanted to mention, so thank you, Tom, or else I would have forgotten to. We did receive an email today from Inabutter, that I believe council and planning board members have copies of. If not, I'm happy to share that.
Yes.
That is, that's all I have, and again, happy to answer questions as we go with, as requested.
Yeah, one thing I did fail to expressly say is when this is done, you know, the actual Scarborough Land Trust will control this land, and it'll be a benefit for the whole community. And one slide that I did forget to show is the areas in the orange up here, those are the remaining wetlands creation areas potentially. And then, you've got surrounding uplands, you know, needed areas around that. So, that's it. My understanding is this is step three of 10. Two was with the planning board last month, and this is number three, so.
Patience is a wonderful thing.
That's right.
Perhaps to tee this up for the next conversation, I just want to be clear, the request is twofold. One is to allow additional material handling to go through the end of next year, that'd be December 2020.
Yep, and that said, I do believe the majority will be done, you know, by this winter or spring. But, I'd rather go a little longer and not have to come back, but we've already, you know, as my timeline shows, in January, we started taking some of the function of what had been there for 10 years at other locations.
And the second part of the request was to simply fall back to the original timeline to run through 2026, if my math's right.
Yeah, yeah, correct. And that was just, you know, it's just like any negotiation, that's just the first shake. I mean, if the town wanted something quicker, then so be it, but it would be nice to finish the project as far as the wetlands creation side as designed. I think it'll make a complete and nice project. And as Tommy noted too, there will be public access when it's done, which will be really nice, because without that, there's not much in that corner of the town. So, I think that'll round out the holdings of the overall town conservation areas nicely.
So, with that, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, so I think I read that there were 20 acres around there that was going to be granted to the town that could be used for this old facility or school. Does this impact that at all?
Nope, that's already been granted to the town. That was one of the first things that was done. One of the, probably the second thing that was done was some upgrades to Beach Ridge Road. So, all those things have been, we've worked with the town engineers and all that. So, basically, aside from that, the land is still in our possession. Granted, you know, 2/3 of it is in conservation even already through DEP and US Army Corps of Engineers, but we haven't, but we had to get all those requirements done with the state and federal agencies first before we could, you know, deed it over. So, at this point, we've got two projects 100% done, you know, final, final, final sign-off, and we're waiting for the third one now, which we anticipate, I would think, by the end of this year. So, we could consider doing one big chunk now, you know, it'd be easier, you know, there's a lot of legal work and, you know, all that, so it'd be easier to clump them up all at once, you know, maybe do it in two phases, or maybe even just one big block at the end. So, it's not, it's clear what will happen, it's just the timing as far as, you know, do we do that at the end of this year, or do we just wait until it's done? So, I think it could go either way.
And the total of that, is, did I hear 50 acres, is that right?
The total site is 330.
Right, but what would be conveyed to the land trust?
Oh, no, the whole site.
The whole site?
What's remaining to be either wetlands creation or preservation is around 60 or 70 acres, I think. The actual creation area is between 15 and 20, depending on what the needs are of future clients, and then there's always surrounding upland preservation areas that are associated, and that's just part of the requirement.
Is there public access to it now, or?
There is on the east side, because there's no construction activity. So, there are some basic trails over there. As far as, you know, we're still actively working there, so, you know, it is limited now because of safety issues, obviously.
So, it's not signed and not encouraged, so it's a challenge right now?
And the unmitigated areas, like some of 50 acres that are yet to be, what, are those still just a quarry, or is that?
Yep, so probably about four acres or so is the old quarry. 10 acres is our kind of stockyard where we process materials and, you know, store them, and then the rest is basically wooded, you know, or the roadway. So, a lot of it's wooded, actually.
And my last question is, given Jay's comments, so you're at the mercy of the market to know when this is going to finish, but you said that there's a couple projects.
Yeah, there's some major transportation projects that are coming up in the very near future.
And you're feeling pretty confident that those are going to?
Yep, it's probably our best chance, so that's, and we've been in talks with them.
So, if we do extend it, is there a chance that we extend it, nothing happens for five years, or?
It's, there's a chance, yep. And so, basically, you know, talking through that with Jay, it's just, well, if that's the case, then 2/3 is built the way it's designed, and 1/3 will be kind of traditional reclamation, you just flatten it and grow some grass and, you know. So, that is a possibility.
It's a possibility, right?
Yep. Which, you know, we'll still be fine.
Right.
It'll still all be reclaimed, and we'll still have the public access, so.
Counsel, handle it.
A couple of questions, if I could. I know I'm just driving in terms of the slides, but could you help us understand that there's three different maps in here that show.
Sure.
There is saying, so that's the one that says the potential wetland areas, and before that was?
You want to show the existing ones?
Yeah, the existing one.
Okay. Yep, so this one in the green, right here, that was the first one. That's the MDOT Gorm Bypass. And then, the second one that happened was the Cabela's over here, this whole area. And then, shortly after that was the jet port, which was this whole area, as well as this area, which is actually part of some of the Rod and Gun Club on the other Yep. Which, you know, we'll still be fine. It'll still all be reclaimed, and we'll still have the public access, so.
Yep.
Yep.
A couple of questions, if I could. I know I'm just driving in terms of the slides, but could you help us understand that there's three different maps in here that show?
Sure.
There is saying so. You, that's the one that says the potential wetland areas.
Yep.
And before that was?
You want to show the existing ones?
Yeah, the existing one.
Okay. Yep. So this one in the green right here, that was the first one. That's the MDOT GORM bypass. And then the second one that happened was the Cabela's over here, this whole area. And then shortly after that was the jet port, which was this whole area, as well as this area, which is actually part of some of the Rod and Gun Club on the other side of the river. So part of that 2008 amendment was, I believe it was 53 acres or 58 acres of preservation. The Rod and Gun Club couldn't do really anything with it anyway. And what it did was actually protected both sides of the nuts such for half a mile or, I'm not sure exactly the figure, but it's just very desirable on a conservation.
Thank you. That's very helpful. The third one I was worried about, though, is buried somewhere in the documents farther along. It shows with the original deed. Could you show, and it's highlighted? Do you have that one in your packet? It's in our packet.
I didn't receive a packet from them. So highlighted in the deed?
It's in the original deed, I think, and it shows.
I think it's the one you had sent us.
Okay, yep.
And it shows an area that's around though. It's bigger than the.
Yeah, so on this map, yes. So the area in the yellow is the Utire project. I meant to replace this map with that one. I forgot.
I'm happy to send this around if anyone would like to see it.
And this shows other areas that could be converted to wetlands?
Correct. So the area to the left over here, this area primarily here and a couple smaller ones in this area are, you know, open space, you know, they're open now, they're cut trees. Basically, the way DEP, Army Corps, they don't want us to mow down a bunch of trees to create wetlands. But if it's already impacted, which it was from previous use, then that's desirable. So, so yeah, if you look at that other map, these are, oops, wrong button, sorry. So this whole area is is the areas that were shaded. So this and the orange are the three smaller areas. So this is approximately 10 acres. This is five-ish, and this is just a couple. So it just depends on what a future client need would be for, but even all the, sorry, all thumbs here. But even all these areas around these orange areas are mostly wooded, would be considered preservation. Because every package has a creation area as well as upland wooded preservation area.
But as I understand it, so the contract zone is originally defined, it's not being changed by this amendment in any way. It's the same parcel, all in.
That's correct. It's just the timeframe for the aggregate. And at this point, it's getting aggregate out. They're no longer creating any more aggregate, doing a material production, so to speak. And the timeframe going back to the original 20-year agreement, I'd rather. Yep. So it does not change the property boundary.
Just a clarifying question, Counselor Hammer's question. These, the two larger areas shown in in the orange here, the largest one on top, is that the where the material handling is happening?
Yep. Yep, that's where everything is.
So if you can picture this scenario of large stockpiles, the other area, is that the the quarry area?
That's the, that's, yep, that's where everything was.
And I mention that because those are two areas that are kind of open and undone at this point. And so if those are the ones to be chosen and restored, there'll be a much more, a better finished product, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I suspect the other one is wooded or dusted.
Yeah, it's less desirable. First choice would definitely be the stockyard and the quarry area, initially. You know, we've already started reclaiming some of the quarry. I'd say at least a third, if not half, is is already sloped and vegetated. So.
If it would be a benefit, perhaps we could arrange a site tour. It really is something you need to see to fully appreciate the before and after. That's something we could do for the shore order.
Thank you. That's very helpful. One other question I had was following on to the query from the Inabutter. Now, they're not specific in the concern that they raised. They talk about having, quote unquote, having to deal with oversized vehicle traffic until 2020 to remove materials that are brought in for sale and used out of the jobs. So have we had any complaints so far? And if we have, what type of they've had? And, you know, and I'm really asking from the standpoint of, I don't know where this falls from an ordinance standpoint, whether it's a good neighborhood ordinance or it falls in a traffic ordinance realm. But I want to make sure we're respectful to, you know, what Inabutter has raised and see what what you feel about that.
Yeah. In in my time here, we haven't had too many complaints about it. I know there have been, and I think recently there was a bit more uptick in traffic coming and taking materials off the site. So I think people noticed that, and we had one or two calls about it. But I think there was sort of an uptick. Maybe there was, you know, product being delivered to a site, and that sort of stopped. So I wouldn't say we have an abundance of complaints, no.
And the issue would not necessarily be an ordinance violation, per se. The issue is that the the use that is potentially bothersome is allowed only vis a vis this contract zone. Without the contract zone approval, that use would not be occurring next door.
And our our goal is to be substantially done, you know, by this winter. But I'd like to have a little more wiggle room and not have to come back again, you know. It's gotten to the point where, you know, we're just not getting enough throughput out of there. So it's not, it's getting to the point, it's not economically feasible to stay in there much longer anyway. So our our goal is to try to get, you know, the majority of that material out this season. To the point that actually, the three of the larger piles of, you know, finished material that we have, I put on sale this week until Columbus Day. So that hopefully try to, you know, get it moving, you know, literally. So.
Thanks. Thank you.
I've got a good sense of the argument for why it would be a good idea to extend this. But I have not heard, what is the argument for not doing it? Does anyone have an argument for why we shouldn't do this?
I think the Inabutter raises the obvious concern, that there's activity occurring some proximity to residences that wouldn't be happening otherwise. Beyond that, I can't think of another reason why not to.
And the timeframe to wrap this up is?
I suppose the other piece, and this is a question I was going to ask Mr. Grandin, is that apparently there are continuing actions on the part of state and federal agencies to finalize things before ultimate transfer. It makes some sense to keep them in the game to finalize those pieces, so we actually can receive a finished product that has all the i's crossed and t's crossed and i's dotted. I think that's an open question. If they are to not receive this, and we're left with things that are open and undone, it would be nice to have the assurance that we're going to get a finished product with all the assurances that it was done right.
So the only, and I don't have an argument for why it shouldn't be done. My only thought was, you know, one thing I know in in all project management is, you know, all work fills the time allowed. So we're already way past the original timeframe. And if having a little bit shorter deadline is going to help expedite things, maybe that, you know, would be my only concern.
Discover Land Trust, you're, why not, Discover Land Trust is not purchasing this from you, correct? It's just transferred over. Okay, I just wanted to say that aloud and make sure.
It's all written in.
Yes.
Eight or 10 days.
Yes.
And if I could, just to be clear, it it says it can be conveyed either to the town or the land trust. So I think that's a conversation with, that the land trust would be a party to. I just want to make sure that's.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. But it is conveyed.
I just wanted to clarify one question. If I can correct, the concern that we got from the constituent was the noise, but you're saying you're going to have the bulk of that out early winter, is what you're saying? With a little bit of the way, that's the plan. So that's really short term. But I think to build on Counselor Foley's request, as I understood the way Tom framed it up, you're also asking for the wetlands piece for an extension to 2026. Is there a way, what's the consequences of shading some time off of that?
That's fine. Yeah, we just, that's fine.
So what would be reasonable?
I don't know. It's a question, it's a question of all question. You know, so I mean, we could say, hey, we could just add five years instead of, you know, if if we just undid the amendment or a part of the amendment, it'd just be 26, because it was 20 years, right? 2006. So that would just, I drafted it. I'm not a lawyer, and I don't pretend to be one. But we say, well, that's, that's easy. We'll start there. So there was really no magic to it. It was just like, well, that was the original, so maybe it's just as easy to go back to that. If there's desire to to make it four or five years, you know, just for the wetlands. I'm not talking about the extraction piece, just the wetlands.
I was looking at the proposed draft amendment, and I don't see the 2026 reference. And that, can someone point that out?
It's, it's really the reference to going back to the 20-year timeframe of the original.
Is it under the now there for provision?
I would say, yes, it is under the now there for. And it is the number one, going back to basically, to read it, you would have to read the other two contract zones before you. And so it's number, it is number one, the requirement for the conservation under three, section 3P shall remain in effect in the requirements of section five and six, which are the ones that reduce that 20-year timeframe to a 10-year timeframe are voided. I will say that Mr. Grandin and I worked on this language together, and I am not an attorney either. The staff will certainly run this through our town's attorney. I want, just wanted to get a sense of council and the planning board's will before going through that process. So there may be refinements to this.
Thank you. I understand how you did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I've actually walked on the, where the trails are or going to be. It's, it is really nice down there. It's nice. I actually like, I prefer that we not disturb wetlands at all. But if you're going to disturb them, I like making them somewhere else so that we aren't just paying, you know, fees and loans. I don't think that does anything for anybody. But that's neither here nor there. I absolutely support, let's get the grinding and aggregate stuff done, because I know the neighbors up there, they've, they would like that finished. And I get that. I definitely only think that it's keeping a longer timeline for creation of wetlands makes sense. I have no idea with whom you're speaking, but I know the Turnpike is looking to make some, some widening. And I'm certainly a big fan of getting traffic up from 114 at some point. So I would like, you know, yeah, let's keep that door open for creation of wetlands in there. So that's where I'm coming from with this.
Sorry, can you set me through, let's say that you sign a contract tomorrow to build out the remaining wetlands. How long does it take to actually create them? And then how many years after do you need to test and monitor before you get final approval?
So basically, they need to be designed, and it's based on what the impacts are from the site that needs the mitigation. And then as far as build out, I mean, obviously it depends on size. But I mean, if you're doing a 10-acre site, that's probably going to take a couple months, a couple, two to four, no more than that. You still have a bunch of plantings. You got to get it to grade, plant it, and then, you know, then all the microtopography, and there's little mounds and stumps and all kinds of little features that they, that they require. But so then that's, and then, then there's regular monitoring, you know, weekly, monthly. But it's a 10-year cycle as far as start to finish. So the first, I believe it's the first four years, there's an annual report to DEP, the town, as well as Army Corps. I think year five, it's just kind of an update. And then every other year, it's a full report, update, full report, update, assuming everything's going well. And then on year 10, it's your post-construction, construction assessment. They literally count every single tree or every little plant so that you're meeting the density requirements. It's, the reports are literally 40 something pages long.
So would you be looking to hand it over to the land trust or the town after all of that testing is completed and all the sign offs are done? Okay. So they're talking at least 10 years, though.
Yeah. So like I said, two thirds of the overall project is complete. Done, done. Other than the one letter we're waiting to hear back from, should be by the end of this year. All the reports are in. It's just literally sitting on someone's desk to be reviewed and checked the final box. So yes, and then there is one small project that's, I think it's year five, so we're halfway. Small, but still, we're, you know, doing all the reporting. And that actually just went in recently this fall, as far as the annual report. So yeah, if we sign one tomorrow, yes, it'll be 10 years before it's, you know, done, done, as far as the monitoring. The building doesn't take that long in the grand scheme of things.
And can you, could that be handed over to the land trust and still with that being open-ended? Or do we, would we have to wait 10 years? Or can those reports and the updates happen by the land?
I don't know. I would think you could, but I guess I'd have to read the fine print, to be honest with you.
With all due respect.
I'll have that answer for you at the next meeting.
I wouldn't want the town and, I don't speak the land trust, but I'd be surprised if they would be interested in assuming ownership with responsibilities, so.
Unless there was an agreement spelling it out that we.
I wonder if, should this move forward, there should be something in writing that explains or requires Grandin to continue doing that and ultimately conveying at the time he can.
I'll have that answer for you next time.
So as a general, you kind of heard from Town Council, do any of the planning board members have anything to share, their views, their thoughts, questions, concerns?
My name is Richard Hendrickson, and I'm the vice here on the planning board. And I would like it noted that we have a quorum here. For those of you who are not familiar with the planning board, Rich DePerry, Jennifer Lys, Rich Meinke, Roger Beely. Did I miss anybody? And me. And I, the developer, the applicant is absolutely correct, there are 10 steps to this process. And I must inform the gentleman who's at step 3B.
Devils in the detail.
So there will be a lot more discussion of this on the planning board, but we've already taken a look at that. And as I see it, what, what you're asking right now in terms of responses from the board, I'll quote Jay, basically, is it worth it? Is it worth the extra time to, to make those three remaining areas into wetlands, to recover them as wetlands, or they simply could be reclaimed and done, essentially, other than whatever sign off is is required? So I would like the planning board in their comments to, to say, is it worth the time to really reclaim all, to really make all of this land into the wetlands, and then start to think about or hand it over to the planning board or the town council and an attorney to figure out how to structure an agreement that would allow that to happen in such a way, perhaps, as the land could be used sooner than 10 years, but without, let's say, the cost being assumed by the town or the land trust. So if we could start over with Rick, is it, is it worth the time? And any comments about the, about this project in terms of value?
Well, it looks like there's already been a lot of thought to be put into this. And to me, I don't want to see the cost, obviously, burden to the town and the land trust. There's a lot going on as well. So I think it's worth the time. I just hate, I don't want to see the costs put back on the town to develop lands. You know, some people feel more strongly about wetland, but I think they're important. I know we can't just, I do think it's worth the time.
Jay?
I would agree. I also think it's worthwhile to leave that window of opportunity open for this type of wetland creation. This, Jay or or Mr. Grandin spoke to this before, but this type of opportunity seems fairly unique. And so the idea that our community would be a place where we would welcome the introduction of new wetland area and larger and continuous wetland area, rather than someone mitigating 200 square feet or half acre at a time to, you know, I'm not a wetland scientist, but like whatever level, quality level of wetland you get at that size versus what our community would stand to gain from, you know, a larger continuous resource like this, I think is just really unique and something that we should support. And that there are potential, you know, obviously, the market for this is subject to all of our overall economy and construction market, but the fact that there is, you know, irons in the fire, I think, is how you. But the fact that there is, you know, irons in the fire, I think is how you worded it, is at least, you know, promising if not, not a sure thing. So I think this is really cool. I was not aware about this until it first came to us on the planning board. I can't wait to go see it, hope there's a field trip. If there isn't an actual field trip, I'm gonna make one of my own. So I just, I just think it's really great. A cool thing for our community. Just a simple question about the, sort of in response to the letter that was received, someone commenting on the truck traffic that they're experiencing now. I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit to what type of trucking or other activity, equipment activity is typically associated with this type of wetland creation?
So as far as the day-to-day operation, it's, it's typically just a front-end loader and dump trucks coming in, taking material out. Occasionally, you know, historically, you know, '17 is when I, we had our last quarry blast. So when we were actively doing that, we did have rock crushers in there occasionally. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't 10 months a year or anything, it was probably one month a year, you know, maybe twice, you know, a year. That's primarily gone. So now it's a little bit of screening, just whatever remaining topsoil that's in excess of what's needed to close out the project, and that's about it.
And so the comparison for this particular abutter, or any of the abutters there, the difference between the type of trucking activity that they're seeing now as you're finishing up your aggregate operations versus what they might see in seven years when you're building the wetlands in that middle parcel? For example, what type of? I know you talked before about manual plantings and things like that, but I would imagine that the activity necessary for this wetland creation is much less than what they're seeing right now?
Yeah, so there, there would be probably a need to haul some of the material offsite if it was a large wetland creation project. You know, even after, you know, the, the period of, you know, actively working it on a daily basis, which, like I said, I, my goal is to be primarily done this, this winter. And then so at that point, you know, day-to-day stuff is done, it's just kind of hurry up and wait. If the project does come, there would be some trucking in and out. But it'd be sporadic for, for the projects.
Sure.
And so in that case, it would be short-term, specific to the project, and that's it.
Thanks.
Before I give a quick answer, I have a question on the settlers green. Do you still anticipate getting, do you anticipate getting sign-off like in 2022, I think?
So we're at year five on that?
Okay.
So that'll be 2024.
2024. So that helps with the decision of, yes, this is worth the time.
Thank you. Other questions?
No, ma'am.
Roger.
I, I think it's certainly worth the time also. Especially when I suspect most people in town didn't even know this, this place existed, so.
Well, that's a good thing, right?
I'm not making too much of a ruckus.
I, I do agree with G. Marie, though. I think anything you can do to alleviate the, the heavy trucking as soon as possible. But I would certainly wait. I mean, it's a freebie that the town's gonna be getting, so it doesn't make sense not, not to take the whole thing.
Yeah, and I, I do want to make that clear, there is really no cost to the town. So whether it's reclaimed as a wetlands, we're doing all the work, it'll be done. Or if it, that doesn't happen and the remaining is a traditional closeout, you know, just a regular reclamation, again, we will do all that work. So it's, it's not, we're not giving a half-done project to the town and saying, here you go, clean it up. So I just wanted to make that clear. So either way, it'll be done and reclaimed in one way or the other.
And I think it's worth the time. I like the coherence of a complete wetlands up there, a complete wetland system, rather than some sporadic areas of wetlands and then all of a sudden a traditionally reclaimed or closed-out area. We have seen the recovery of quarries in Scarborough recently with projects before the planning board. And it's, it's been exciting for us as the planning board to see how developers with imagination are taking property that I would look at and say, nothing is gonna come of this ever. Nothing can be built here, nothing, it can't be used for anything. And folks are really bringing forward some tremendous ideas. To have a coherent, complete wetland area up there for the town of over 300 acres, I think is a real plus, added to the fact that it's free. And the work will be done by the applicant. I do think the town needs some protection to ensure that any monitoring is continued by the applicant. It makes sense that that be, that the continuity be there as well. And I understand the abutters concern. It's closing down, and I'm sure Mr. Grandin will ensure that it proceeds apace and that it really is done by December 2020, if not considerably sooner.
That's my personal opinion.
And we look forward to seeing you in the number, step four and five and 10.
Right.
So with that, any additional comments?
So I was in a meeting probably a year or two ago where I, it was mentioned that the municipal campus was out of, or at its max development or close to its max development due to wetlands issues. And my question is, is there opportunity here for the town to partner, to transfer, you know, potential wetlands areas in our municipal campus to this area or not?
Jay's probably more qualified to answer that question. I don't think there's a direct opportunity for us, but certainly we could, as any other developer, if you will, building and impacting plants, take advantage of restoration on this, on this site as opposed to painting new feeds. So indirectly, we could certainly take advantage of the opportunity. We certainly see the value of where the impact occurs, let's have wetland created as opposed to it happening in Roostercow.
Yeah, it's desirable by all agencies to have it as close, certainly in the same watershed. If you can have it in the same town, even better.
And for us, there's a recreational component that is really kind of an added benefit as well. Should the boards see this favorable, at least conceptually, I would recommend that we work on some additional language to really articulate ongoing responsibilities for Grandin to do the due diligence to close out the project. It sounds as though even with this requested extension, those responsibilities will extend beyond that date. And people smarter than me can come up with some simple language, or maybe not so simple, but language that makes it clear that there are ongoing responsibilities beyond.
I, I think the current language is quite thorough, but definitely worth revisiting now that, you know, this much time's come and we're actually looking at the end rather than 15 years ago saying, oh, it'll end someday, so, yeah, no, that's proven.
True, the original contract zone clearly contemplates and makes the responsibility for Grandin to do all that. But I think there's also, was an assumption that that work would all be concluded within the original 20 years? And I think we now realize that that's not the case. So I, I think some fairly simple language can address that.
Yep, sound proven.
So I guess with that, we've seen no more comments from either the planning board or town council, or any public comments that wants to come up and address the decision? Probably the best bet, a name, address, and share with us your thoughts.
Thank you, my name is Mike Mason, I'm at Mandalane in Scarborough. I'm in an abutter on the Beetridge side. And I have been aware of the project. But I also do think that it is worth waiting. I, I think Grandin has been a good neighbor and has kept good faith, and I want to thank them. I've, I've talked with Larry sometimes on the phone, and I want to thank him for his transparency and, and the openness that they do their work with, so. I do have a couple of questions. The first is, from reading the materials and from what Larry said today, it sounds like there is not going to be any additional blasting or importing of materials. I'd like to confirm that, and if that is the case, I would recommend that that be written into the, into the amendment. Although I, I guess I have a question, if the quarry site, which I believe is the, the middle site, were to be converted into a wetland, would that require importing of, of fill to do so? So that, that's just a question. I, I, I do, I, I do have comments about the heavy vehicle traffic on Beetridge Road. It is extremely high, and, and I happen to live, and, and I happen to have a bus stop where it's around a blind curve and at the bottom of a fairly long hill. So some of the large vehicles are, are moving well over the speed limit when they pass my bus stop, where my daughter has to cross Beetridge Road, by the way. First of all, I, it's, Grandin is, is only a fraction of the dump trucks that, that do pass by on Beetridge Road. Although I do, I did notice that in the original 2006 agreement, there is a, a clause about no exiting left out of the site onto Beetridge Road. And I would just ask for consideration that that be adhered to, I, I don't believe it is right now. I also have several questions that can somewhat be lumped together regarding public use and recreational use after the conveyance. There is a lot of reference in the original agreement to trails and development of trails. And it's unclear to me at least, who's responsible for actually developing those? Is that part of the, the agreement that, that is supposed to happen before the conveyance or after? And if so, what's the timeline for, for public use of, of some of those things as it relates to the completion of active work and/or the completion of wetland mitigation period? There's also reference to actually where the trails are and that timing and location of the trails should be approved by the planning board. And I'm just unaware if any of that has occurred, or if it is, how we can find out what that information is? And if it hasn't, what's the, what's the plan for, for doing that? What's the plan for maintaining and policing those, those recreational uses and so on? I, I think that should be clarified as we update the agreement. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And again, I want to thank Larry for his openness and willingness to work with us. And thank you to the, the council and the planning boards.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward with stuff? So I guess with closeout, I'll come.
Can Larry respond, is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm curious.
If I may, whether it takes the seat, I think one of the things I would like to touch on is the, the public use and the creation of the trails. I think as, as already been pointed out, we're at step three of 10. This was certainly one of the things, and Larry and I have already started talking about that, that I think the planning board will really take up as part of their site plan improvement process. I've been going back in the old files, trying to dig up, and, you know, I think there's, there's general agreement around trail creation, but we really need to have that better codified in our files around what that looks like. So that is something that as this process continues, I would see the planning board taking up. Certainly if the council wants to do more in the contract zone, certainly let staff know. But we'll be reporting back to you on that as we, as we go along. But certainly, there's other pieces.
If I could just answer a couple of his questions that benefit the group, I think, and, and also just 30,000 people talking about some of the trail concepts and what's already happened. So the only thing that's really been important lately is we have been bringing in some fill, and I pointed that out to Jay when we, when he was out there a few weeks ago, just for replaying the, you know, when we left the quarry, it was literally a straight-up pace. So we have been bringing in some just excavation from job sites to build those three to one slopes. And that's really the only thing that's coming in at this point. You know, there's no finished product and that and whatnot, so. As far as truck traffic turning left, I'll look into that, if we are doing that. If, you know, it was the understanding that we would turn right, because that's where the, our road upgrades were done. So I will certainly look into that. And then as far as public use, you know, I think there could be some level of public use in addition to what's already there. On the east side, there are some, some trails that lead over to the active areas, and those have been built already. So from the, you know, the DOT side, there's a, there's a trail that comes over, and it traverses the entire length of the jetport creation area, and it leads right into where we're working. And then fortunately, I think it'll be quite easy for a lot of these trails to get connected because a lot of the existing roadways where, you know, our trucks have been going will just basically cinch down and become trail rather than, you know, a big road. So what is 100% reclaimed, you know, to the east where the DOT, there are some proper trails, they're, you know, 60 wide and, you know. So it, it has already begun, and then, like I said, a lot of the existing roadways will become trails. We're not, we won't get into weeds on that tonight, but we'll get that on four, seven, and nine.
Yes, you will.
So with that talk, maybe you can help walk me through, we now as a town council need to put a motion forward, and we've got basically three choices.
Right, we need to make one of three findings this evening.
Yeah, so the, the first finding would be to draw the request, that's one. Two would be to continue the process, the request for contract zoning, with or without the modi, modification suggested, and we've talked about it tonight. And the third is to revise and resubmit the application. So I think at this point, if we're ready to entertain a motion from somebody. Kelsey Donovan?
To continue the process that has been advanced here tonight.
I'll second that.
With or without modifications?
He's doing number two, right?
He's doing number two.
Without modifications.
Without?
Without modifications.
And?
I second it.
You second it? Discussion? Anybody got a question?
If, if there were modifications, I'd be happy to, to hear them. I just didn't hear any that were obvious at stage number three.
Could, could I ask just a clarifying questions, question on the without modification? As I would understand that, that you're generally comfortable with the, the, the proposed timeline and such. But having the attorney review it and come back, you know, having the legal review, I guess that's the type of modifications that I would still think we would undergo. But I, my, my assumption is Mr. Donovan's motion without modifications is you're comfortable with going back to the original 20-year timeframe and the 2020 closeout of the aggregate work. So that, that's how I'm interpreting that motion, so I just want to be sure staff's clear on what, on what's being put forward.
Kelsey Kettering?
Oh, this is, I, I'd like some clarification. So the way I'm understanding this process, and I'm just throwing it out, is that this is just a preliminary direction for how we're gonna move forward. It's gonna come back to the council at some point, so I would agree with Mr. Donovan that the way he's worded it would be fine, because this is all very preliminary. Just get it to the planning board, they do their thing, and it's gonna come back, so.
I guess the only clarification I'd like to have, like, for me, without, what I'd like, when I heard that, what I hope gets embedded in the conversations or some of the comments that were heard tonight, I don't know if that needs to be in the motion or not, but I think there were some great points brought up. But as I understand the process, that's gonna be part of your normal process, is that?
Again, that, that, that's, that's, that's my understanding of it, is that when this comes back to council, the, the contract zone language may have some modifications, but it'll be really around the legal documents and the type of elements that we've talked about tonight, but not on the, the broad general principles of going back to the 20 years and the 2020 timeframe. And if that's the, if that's sort of the will of the council, that, that's my understanding. So I just want to be sure I understand the will of the council.
Who else?
I respect that.
Phil, can't get rid of it. You know, if I had my druthers, again, I would probably shave off a year or two, and I know that may or may not seem like much, but again, it's around, you know, just trying to put the fire a little bit closer to getting it done. But it's not, for me, it's nothing to hang my hat on and sort of die on, like, it's not going to make or break my support for the project. I do think it's worth doing it all the way through. So, that would be my only, you know, but I'm very comfortable moving this along to step, whatever it's going to be, four B, or five, or wherever it is, but yes.
Yeah, sorry. I'm okay moving it forward as well, and I think from my perspective, I don't have any council stipulations or changes that we're, you know, we try to stick on you, but I would like you to address a lot of the questions and topics that came up today, and maybe take a look at the language, make sure that, you know, the town would be on the hook for some of the monitoring at the end of the project, so, but, no, I'm okay moving it forward as well.
Seen none, or we all...
Just to clarify, my motion was made in the spirit of the remarks by the planning director and Mr. Cludier and Ms. Foley.
So, are we ready to vote? So, are all those... So, I think that, thank you for spending your evenings on us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Planting board, see you on the council side.
You've got to say your hand.
And thank you for all the...
Thank you very much.
If you could just, planting board members, if you just want to leave your names there, I'll, we'll...
Seriously, thank you for your patience.
No prizes, right, folks?
Let's turn up the tone a little bit.
Yes, that'd be awesome.
Appreciate the time.
Wow, why is it... Everything looked purple for a second.
We're still rolling.
Get everybody back, except for Jim Ritter.
Okay, we're going to continue the meeting. The next item on the agenda is Order Number 19069, and that is first reading scheduled public hearing on the proposed amendment to Chapter 311, Schedule of Fees Pertaining and In-Lu Fees for Affordable Housing and Development Transfers. And Tom, I don't know if you want to...
I'll do a quick introduction, and I think I'll flip it to Jay. Interestingly, this comes before you from two of your advisory committees, both the Affordable Housing Alliance and the Conservation Commission. Jay's had the occasion to meet with both, so it's fairly unique. I can't recall another time where there's been an initiative come jointly from two of your bodies that you've directed to work on various matters. So, I think Jay could probably introduce the detail of that.
Hello. Thank you, Jay. Jay Chase, planning director. So, let's see, I'll give you a background. You certainly hopefully have my memo on the items, and so I'll just touch on some of those. I will point out that Marge De Sanctis, the chair of the Housing Alliance, is here, and she said if I don't touch on everything, she will come up and make sure that we hit all the highlights. So, as has already been mentioned, this recommendation is coming to you from both the Housing Alliance and the Conservation Commission to increase the in-lu fees for the affordable housing and the development transfer provisions in Chapter 311. That's our fee schedule essentially, from $20,000 per unit to $50,000 per unit. This discussion really began several months ago with the Housing Alliance, because they realized and noticed that developers were taking more advantage of the paying the in-lu fee rather than developing affordable housing units, as is allowed by our ordinance. I want to be sure that's clear, that this is, our ordinance spells out that this is really developers' choice, quite frankly, and so they've been doing exactly what's allowed. But that the $20,000 goes towards our affordable housing, goes to a fund, a town fund, that's to be used directly for affordable housing purposes, and I think council's actually allocated some monies recently to that end. But I think one of the conversation with the Housing Alliance has been, well, this $20,000, you know, would be behoove the town, we'd rather see units built and brought on into the marketplace that are affordable, rather than getting the funding, recognizing that the funding doesn't actually get us a whole unit. So, that's really where the conversation began. And so, as that conversation evolved, I was part of those on and off, as I typically am, help out staffing, and sort of as part of that conversation, I identified for the Alliance that, well, you know, when we start thinking about the in-lu fee, we also need to think about our development transfer fee, because those two are really linked together in our ordinances. Where, in our ordinance, in our higher-density, mixed-use zones, we have these provisions for density bonuses. We have both the development transfer as an opportunity and affordable housing as an opportunity. Again, it's really developers' choice in that matter. They can take advantage of either situation, and the in-lu fees are also synced together. Because if one fee for one of the two provisions was significantly higher or higher than another fee, most folks would take advantage of the lower fee, and we'd essentially be creating a, you know, we'd be creating an imbalance in the market, in the ordinance, so to speak. So, as part of that, I had a conversation with the Conservation Commission. We took a look at the development transfer provisions. Development transfer provisions actually have a prescribed measure for the council to consider adjustments to the fees, and it's really taking a look at the costs of raw land in the low-growth areas of our community as defined by our comprehensive plan. So, in this memo, I sort of spelled out the work that my department did recently, really following the same pattern that was used back in 2006, 2007, when the ordinance and the fee was originally adopted. So, we haven't looked at it in that amount of time. We're talking 10 or 12 years at this point. And, pardon me, and as the memo demonstrates, what we found is that the statistics show that the mean for raw land costs are about $37,000, and the median was about, it's $50,000. And so, as part of the ongoing conversations, the Housing Alliance and the Conservation Commission both sort of talked about these elements and are recommending that $50,000 be the consideration for adjusting the in-lu fees. So, I think...
Thank you, Dick. We had talked about the $50,000 for quite a while, and Portland is $100,000. And so, and like Jay said, if we leave it at 20, the difference between a market-rate house and an affordable house to the developer is greater than 20. So, they're going to just pay the 20 and build that market-rate house, because that's going to bring in a lot more profit. If it's 50, that comes really close to what the difference is between a market-rate house and an affordable house, because we went through all that with, who was there at our meeting? Oh, Ms. Barra. And so, when we were doing the calculations on median income of what person can have to be, you know, to qualify for affordable and spending 30% of their income on housing, what you could sell that affordable house for? And doing that calculation, and Rocky would say, well, what we could sell the market-rate house for versus the affordable house was about $50,000. So, we came up with 50 before Jay did his wonderful numbers that came up with 50 as well. So, those were some of the other considerations that the Housing Alliance looked at, to make it more equitable, so it wasn't just a slam dunk. It's easier to pay that low fee and not do, not build affordable, because our goal is to build affordable. So, that was another reason why we came up with the 50. Thank you. Oh, I'm Marge De Sanctis. I didn't say that.
Does anybody have any questions further there?
Uh-uh.
Seen none? Thank you. Does anybody in the public want to speak to this? Seen none, will close public comment? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Councilor Kettering?
Okay.
Well, I'm...
I just, I'm very pleased to see this come forward. I mean, I think going back to my very first year on the council, I thought $20,000 was way too low. I would have probably gone to 70. So, anyway, I'm pleased that this work has been done, and I know from being the liaison of the Conservation Commission, they were in full support as well.
Thank you. Councilor Kettering?
I also support this. $50,000 to me is, should be more, in my opinion, but that's all right. I can live with the $50,000, just because of what property prices are in Scarborough now and will continue to be. And there is an absolute lack of affordable housing opportunities for people, as well as substandard housing, which is another issue that we really need to be looking at. But I was happy to see this $50,000 fee, so I would support this.
Councilor Johnson?
This is actually a question, so I apologize. I tried to get my hand up, real quick. Is there evidence that when Portland went to $100,000, that it actually increased the supply of the affordable housing, or did they increase to $100,000 in Portland?
Well, some of them are still just paying the $100,000.
And do we know, do we know if it, if it was successful in reducing the amount of developers that were paying the in-lu fee? Do we know that? I mean, we can, I'm sure we can find it pretty easily.
I do not. I did actually have opportunity to meet with, you may have seen in the paper, in the last few months, the director of planning in Portland left. Before he left, we actually had a chat, and I told him what we were working on and asked him about...
Right.
How they came, arrived at $100,000, and it was sort of a political negotiation, as I was informed. But to your question, I don't, it does, my understanding is that many developers are paying the in-lu fee rather than developing the units, but I, you know, I wouldn't sort of bet everything I have on that.
Right.
But that is, that's the, I guess I just said, that's been my understanding of it. I haven't done any exploration, real study on it, so...
So, I guess to play a little bit of devil's advocate, if our goal is to actually increase the supply of affordable housing, the mechanism of increasing the in-lu fee doesn't seem like it has paid off completely in Portland. By the way, I still support this. I'm just, I'm just...
I don't know that we actually know the answer.
Okay.
All I know is I did hear a rumor that says some of them are still paying the...
Okay, so perhaps, perhaps it's worth getting some numbers.
That still gives us more money to get to affordable housing developers.
No, and I agree with that, but when we put out RFPs and we only have one response, we're still stuck in that conundrum of...
Yeah.
Where's the supply of the affordable housing? But with that, I'll yield the floor.
I just have one piece of anecdotal evidence. I've talked to the city manager in Portland. I believe many are paying, so that doesn't appear to be an absolute deterrent, but interestingly, they're not, they're not actually choosing to create them, they're choosing not to pursue a density bonus. And so, I think that's something we've got to monitor fairly closely, what is the effect in the marketplace of this?
And that was actually, I'm sorry, one thing that I did want to point out, that one of the other significant differences here in Scarborough, it is a density bonus.
Okay.
In Portland, they have inclusionary zoning, where developers have to do something for affordability. We do have inclusionary zoning. The Crossroads Plan Development District, the Downs, is our only district that we require affordable housing. These other zones that are referenced in my memo, it's a density bonus.
And these are all site plan reviews?
Subdivision, yes. Yep.
Mr. Cludier?
Yeah, I guess I'm curious what other options were looked at, and kind of along the lines of what Paul and Tom were saying. If, when I just think logically about this, if you're increasing the cost for a developer to develop housing units, then that's going to have a negative impact on the supply of affordable housing. If you had companies that were willing to come in and take advantage of some of our RFPs, then maybe that's different, but I feel like what this encourages is more expensive housing on one end, and then subsidized housing on the other, as opposed to inclusionary zoning, like in the Crossroads.
Well, there are other things we're looking at. No, you can talk, just go to the audio.
I would like you to talk.
There are other things we're looking at besides this to try to encourage affordable housing. And one of them is we're talking about a marketing plan for the RFP, because when it came out, it was right during Planapalooza and all these other activities that the town was doing, and we really didn't do a focused marketing. We sent it to a few developers that we knew, or talked about it here and there, and then after about six months, I think we said it should be on the web, you know, Scarborough's front page, so then it got put on there. But there was never a full-blown marketing, this is our RFP. We've also changed it so that we've taken the dates out of the RFP, so it doesn't have to come out in April and get turned in by August or whatever the dates were. So, it's a rotating, anytime you have a project, you can do the RFP.
Have you looked at any other mechanisms to encourage affordable housing, like inclusionary zoning or voucher programs?
Inclusionary zoning is on our agenda list of things to address that we haven't, we haven't begun.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
I guess the only place I'd contribute, I will support it, I would like to see it to be higher also, but I think it's a great step forward.
Well, and like I said, we need to, we need to look at what it's going to do to density bonuses and, you know, how that's going to affect things.
And then, it doesn't apply to the motion, but I think, how long was it that we set this? Was, how long ago was it that we set the $20,000, 12 years?
12, yeah.
I'd like, you know, market, the market rates change all the time, so I'd love to shorten that cycle, so...
Well, maybe we should annually review it. Every year, we are reviewing, annually, we are reviewing what the AMI, the Area Median Income is, and what, who qualifies and how much that dollar amount is. And we've set up a spreadsheet on how to calculate that every year using the AMI. So, we could just say we're going to look at what the market is and review all numbers associated with this once a year, and that way, if there's, and by then, too, if we wait another year and do it, we'll be able to tell, did it have any effect?
Yes.
Did it affect density? Did it affect, you know, any, any other areas? So, that might be a way to do it.
So, on this motion, are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Seen any... Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 19070, Act on the Request to Set the Date, Time, and Location of Municipal Elections for Thursday, November 5, 2019, at Scarborough High School. Alumni gem, appoint the warden. Deputy warden, set the hours for voter registration. Act on the Appointments of Election Ballot Clerks pursuant to Chapter 200, Article 8. Nominations and elections unauthorized the town clerk to make any additional appointments as necessary.
That's a lot of words.
This is standard procedure?
Yes.
Is it required to govern municipal elections as well as, um, Chapter 200 of the Town Charter? And I requested it be approved.
Is there...
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Oh, any public comment, I imagine? I'm assuming not, but, so it was second, any discussion? See NO discussion? All those in favor? See unanimous? Thank you.
Article 19071, Act on the Request to Approve the Names of Residents to Serve on the Ad-Hoc Community Center Advisory Committee as recommended by the Town Council. And Tom, I think this has been your labor of love, so to speak.
First, I want to compliment members of council, council, for the public's benefit, the council convened last Wednesday, the 11th, in executive session, reviewed some really stellar candidates. It was a fairly challenging process to work their way through that, but they really, I think, had a very sound system, and it was a really good process to be part of. So, I congratulate the council for taking the time and to really be thoughtful in this process. I did have the occasion to reach back out to all of these folks. Since they expressed interest initially, the council's actually established the charge, so I shared the charge with them, reaffirmed that they continued, their interest continued, and I'm pleased to report that all of the folks selected indicated so. I'm... I'm also aware that there is a, the second school board member, and perhaps that can be offered as an amendment tonight, so we can complete the full composition and we can get moving.
So with that, is there any public comment on this? Is seeing none, we'll close out public comment. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And I think, Tom, you need a motion to amend? Just to.
Who is it?
Sarah Layton.
Okay, yeah, so I'll motion to amend the. Yep, to add Sarah Layton as the second BOE member.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to amend? That's, and back to the main motion as amended. Tom, do you intend to read the names?
Oh, certainly. I beg your pardon, I overlooked that. The, this is a total composition of 13 members, nine of which are voting. The voting members under consideration are Sarah Boone, Isaiah Doe, Kevin Freeman, Amelia Kurtz, Stacy Newman, Patrick O'Reilly, Matt Seither, Denise Smith, and Matt Tonello. Non-voting members, two members from the Town Council, John Clucci and Paul Johnson. And for the school board, non-voting members would be Leanne Casleones and now Sarah Layton.
So with that, back to main motion. All those in, are we ready to vote? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. Item nine is standing in special committee reports and liaison reports. And I, Don, you want to start? Councilor Hannah?
Yes, thanks, thanks very much. I wanted to, just a couple of updates. One was, just from a planning board standpoint, I'm liaison to the planning board, and the, the public hearing that we conducted was a result of amendments that we made to the processes, process for the contract zone, amendment and original applications. We are now following the same process for that. And I know a lot of people participated in that on the council. It was also vetted through several committees, so, you know, I, I think a lot of times, public process might feel more like a hockey game than a symphony, but sometimes when it works, it's more like a symphony tonight. So I want to thank everybody who participated in that, and it's a good example where I think we had a, otherwise, if we didn't have this, it would have gone straight to a vote, and I think that would have been tough from a number of dimensions. So just thanks to everybody for that. On finance committee, we had a finance committee meeting last night that ran pretty long, but it was very productive. We'll be coming back to the council with some recommendations for how to do some, take advantage of some market conditions that would allow us to refinance some of our, some of our capital, some of our bonds. So I want to thank Tom for flagging that and getting it in front of us right away, and in particular for Larissa, and also Joe Cetera, who came here and, and on very short notice, and gave us a very good presentation. So we've done this before, and it helps to improve our present value and also our cash flow. So we'll be looking forward to discussing details with, with the council on the second. The other thing I'd say is that we have another joint finance committee meeting next Wednesday between the Board of Ed and also the Town Council. We've had a couple of meetings so far with good results. We'll be talking about metrics. We'll also be revisiting a rubric which Counselor Johnson has introduced. But we'll also be talking about timing effects and what sort of requirements the, the town and, and the board both would like to see in terms of making the timing of first and second readings, and exactly what we're looking for in each of those, clear and, and putting them on the calendar in a way that will allow them to be productive. So, so we'll look forward to coming back with more details on that. And the, the last thing I'd say is on Echo Maine, I'll be attending a couple of meetings tomorrow as we get back on a regular schedule for Echo Maine. And we'll be in a finance committee and also an executive committee sessions. But continuing pressure on, on recycling and dealing with municipal solid waste. So, you know, that's something that we, you know, we continue, continuing cost pressures on that and other things that we'll be discussing as a town. So those are my updates. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Donovan?
Sustainability committee met yesterday, and we had a presentation by the two young interns, young adults, one from UNE, the other from USM, who spent the summer going and looking at the trash, really the recyclables, to make a determination whether or not there was a high degree of contamination in it. Contamination in this context is materials that cannot be recycled. The, two young people were very impressive. Not an easy job. Up early, a lot of legwork, and the presentation they put on was, was, was quite impressive. The marked barrels were found to be significantly improving over the course of the event. So the education that was going on by being checked, by being flagged as not in compliance, and giving information to how they could bring themselves into compliance, really had a very positive effect. And Echo Maine had set some pretty high fees charged for circumstances where loads were being rejected. And we, I think, some recent months ago, we had a $10,000 charge just for rejected loads. So, and this is, of course, all because the quality of the recyclable materials has gone way up. You have to have almost no contamination. It's a very small percentage, whereas before, China really was the instigator of cracking down on this. They would take almost anything, and so it didn't make a difference. It was very interesting to me that they identified, because the materials would get laid out on the floor of Echo Maine, and these young interns went and they observed it and saw how it was graded, that the biggest contaminant is plastic bags. Kind of bag you get at a grocery store. And plastic and cellophane kinds of wraps that you would unwrap something with and then just throw it in the recycling. Those two represent about 55 to 60% of all the contamination in recycling. So if we could just correct that, we'd be doing well. So I think we found that the education process that Jamie Fitch has been advancing on recycling, that this program was successful, and, let's see what else. I think the conclusion that people are coming to is because of the atmosphere in which recycling exists today, the better judgment, and historically, we have wanted to recycle every single possible thing you could. The better judgment at the moment is, when in doubt, throw it out. And that really is the mantra that is going on at the present time. So it was a good exercise, demonstrated that you can achieve better rates of recycling, and I think it was a very good experience for a couple of young interns.
Councilor Kettering?
Yeah, it's a good thing they weren't checking my trash. I have missed a couple of meetings. My husband had a toe knee replacement, and I say that about the trash because he's going to kill me. But you have to take a Saran Wrap and wrap it around the incision to take showers. And so we go through more Saran Wrap. It's not, it really makes me mad, but anyway. It's not good for the environment. But that being said.
But I digress.
But I digress. Anyway, I'm sorry, wasting everyone's time. Ordinance will be, it was supposed to be tomorrow, but because of people's schedules, it will be moved to the 26th, which is a week from tomorrow, at 4:00. We are working very diligently on the marijuana ordinance. It's not an easy thing to get our, I mean, we're getting our hands and heads around it, but we want to make sure we do the right thing before we bring it to the council. So ordinance will be next Thursday at 4:00 P.M.
Councilor Fuller?
Yes, the Communications Committee met, and, oh, sorry, thank you. The Communications Committee met, and are diligently repursuing the, taking a look at the SWAC analysis that Mr. Johnson handed over to us, and we didn't quite complete. So kind of trying to re, re-get their feet under them. But I do want to mention, we're also having our next community roundtable. It's an opportunity to come out and speak to us about anything that's on your mind. That's going to be on Tuesday, September 24th, at Wentworth School at 6:30. We'll have snacks, so that's always a good draw. So come on out and tell us what's on your mind in regards to things going on in town. The Conservation Commission met as well. They were kind of reviewing, I'm not sure if I mentioned this before, they're in the beginning process of an 18-month project that will wrap up in about December 2020, but it started with a field trip last month all around town looking at high watermarks from the 1978 nor'easter. And hopefully, they, what they'd like to see happen out of that is culminate in, in some kind of a mural project down at Ferry Beach on the bathhouse, and they're looking to get some of the students involved, because they feel like having a really strong visual will help folks kind of understand the danger of sea level rise and what that could really do. And they were very pleased about the $2.5 million land bond that we approved. Just wanted to share that as well. And I'm going to add one more thing to Counselor Donovan's notes on the Sustainability Committee, because Jamie shared this with the Conservation Commission, and I thought it was quite remarkable, that they're pursuing a Soul Smart designation for the town of Scarborough. Soul Smart is a, I'm going to just read this. Soul Smart is a program funded by the Department of Energy that helps local government reduce barriers to solar energy growth and make it easier for homes and businesses to go solar. There are three designations, gold, silver, or bronze, and by preliminarily looking through their criteria, it looks like Scarborough will actually qualify for the gold designation. So we could become a Soul Smart community, which I thought was cool. And that is it.
I have none, except for just to say publicly, I'm excited to get the community center process underway, and it's going to be a lot of work, and it's going to be fast and furious, and I'm excited to be a part of it.
And I echo Counselor Johnson's statement there. I'm excited to get going, working on the community center oversight committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, Tom, any?
Yes, a number of things. I'll try to be quick and brief. After, we're still 10 years in process with FEMA revising flood maps. Just, just think about that for a moment. 10 years, and they have still yet to produce final maps. Most recently, November of 18, 2018, we did file an appeal regarding the most recent release of those maps. And just quickly, by way of history, the largest impact that we are concerned about is really the effects of properties in and around the Marsh area. The sort of modeling that was used and proposed by FEMA in those revised, revised maps really had dramatic and really not, effects that we just think were outlandish and had tremendous impact on between 300 to 400 different properties in town. Just last week, received notice, along with every other community in Cumberland and York County, who filed an appeal last November, that our appeal was denied. They did provide some detail as to the reasons for the denial. We have met with our consultant, and we'll be resubmitting, addressing those deficiencies. And I think at the same time, also requesting something called a scientific review panel. This is a, it's akin to mediation. Both parties pick a panel of five scientific experts that's able to come together and impartially independently view the data and make some decisions. So I hope we're finally on the right path to move to closure on this. Public safety building, there's kind of a dynamic situation. We've got a design issue that we're working with our architect and builder on, having to do with compliance with the fire code on the exterior wall. So you'll notice on the main building, masonry has, has stopped, and that's a bit of a concern, particularly as weather is starting to sit in. But I'm very pleased the team continues to work as a, as a team, and we'll sort out these differences. And I think the committee is going to want to schedule some time before the council to give you a broad and general update, but that's a, an issue that's just unfolding right now. I'm not sure if you've noticed, but the tower has taken its full height. The tower is at 180 feet. Just a point of fact, that, that overall height is a requirement and a function of our own communication needs to make sure that we are reaching all corners in areas of town. The committee also decided, I think correctly, to build a tower in such a way that it could house up to five different cellular providers. And so we'll be undertaking a process to identify potential providers and their significant lease revenue that we expect, and I think we'll see it as soon as the next budget year. Please to report the navigator position. You might recall through the budget process, I believe we have that starting October 1st, so we're well underway. And a number of excellent candidates, a really robust process that's involved a similar position in South Portland, which we've kind of modeled this after. Steffi Cox from Project Grace has been part of the interview panel, as has the librarian. These are folks that are dealing with many of these issues on a daily basis and have a really, I think, helpful view or perspective. So hopefully, by the time we meet again next, we'll have worked through that recruitment. The, the ongoing tax appeal, we're about five years into a tax appeal that's, that's landing back at the law court. I previously advised oral arguments. They have been rescheduled to Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 24th, at 11:10 a.m. And anyone who's interested, it's open to the public, so anyone who's interested certainly can come. I'll provide some directions if you're interested in coming. It's about 20 minutes of time, actually, before the law court. The tragedy that we've all witnessed in Farmington, I just want to report, the fire community statewide and nationwide is strong, and Scarborough Fire certainly has offered its support. In fact, we have a crew that will be manning a 24-hour shift tomorrow to allow their staff to get some time with their families. And there are six members of that department, one whom is deceased, that are, you know, so they're really challenged at this point. I'll also note that Jim Butler, our code officer, has personal relations. He grew up in Jay and knows many of the folks on that department, was there, and we've supported him the last couple of days. As you may expect, an explosion of that size, there's, there's much collateral damage. The building itself is obviously leveled, but there are associated collateral damage. So as a commercial code officer, he's actually been lending some support to helping them work through that and as efficiently as possible. So we're pleased to help. And lastly, I'll just mention, there is a revaluation workshop scheduled for your next meeting on October 2. We expect to cover a number of areas, a statistical overview of the results. Those results are still coming in, so to speak. The assessor actually tonight held office hours, if you will, scheduled appointments, and will continue to, so long as they're requested. But we expect that's going to start to wane in the coming weeks. We also want to specifically speak to some of the differences that were identified early on. Higgins Beach, Hillcrest, and a number of questions around the Prostnet community. So we will prepare information and speak directly to that. Beyond that, we continue communications, never enough and never fast enough. I fully appreciate, but through social media, we communicated out some additional information regarding the evader process. That same information will be in the leader this Friday. And as was mentioned at the podium, and I think mentioned up here through the last couple of weeks, producing some sort of legend to explain and decipher the elements of the property card is in process, and we expect to have that up and available for residents shortly. Lastly, I'll just comment, council members have seen one of our town residents, and also one of your own, have, have done some fascinating things with a lot of this information and found ways to graphically display it. And I'm anxious to find a way to grab onto that presentation and find a way to share that out to our residents. For obvious reasons, I want to make sure that the, the data's been truthed and it's, it's the right stuff. But I think there's great value in sharing that out, and we'll be working. Just this morning, I spent some time playing, or playing, but looking at a couple of the models. And it's truly remarkable, and we ought to be sharing that out, but I want to make sure when we put our stamp on it, it's having all the right inputs and, and as best as it could be. So with that, I'm available for questions if you have any. So, with that, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Can I just wrap up with Counselor comments? That's good.
Try to think of ways to get people to vote. It's an off-cycle election and typically low turnout, and I've been looking at, in addition to the revale data, some voter statistics, and you know, there's a certain segment of town that votes every time, but there's a lot of people that don't. So, if you have any ideas for helping to drive the vote, regardless of who you support, I think it's an important time to start looking into that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
I don't have much. I appreciate Tom acknowledging that. I think there's lots of, I said earlier today to a constituent that data brings people together. I think it's easier to find common ground when data is easily accessible, so I think we should continue to try to make that data as accessible as possible. And on a side note, I also mentioned, you know, Mr. Ben Howard, who hasn't been around lately, but he's been a big proponent of trying to expand our broadcasting onto different platforms, and I'd be really interested in exploring just how to get us on Facebook Live or YouTube or what have you to make, you know, sometimes you have to do a little digging to find our broadcasting, and that's not all our fault. I mean, whether it's through the cable box or through the website at this point, we can be hard to find. So, in that same spirit, I hope we work towards making these meetings more accessible to people in their homes. And that's all I have.
Yeah, so we kind of rushed through the, well, not rushed, but we went through the process around the ad hoc committee pretty quickly tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to all those who applied, because we really had, what was the total, like almost 50 people put their names in the hat, and for a ad hoc committee, that's remarkable. We need to have more and more people getting involved in things like that. So, we couldn't pick everybody, although we wanted to. We tried to balance it in a lot of different ways, and I think we did a good job overall. So, thank you to those folks. Definitely get out and vote. And I do have a couple of dog suits that if you stand in the corner and get people riled up, it seemed to work a couple of years ago. We got a lot of people out to vote, so you're welcome to borrow them if you want.
If I could, I did communicate with, out with all those that expressed interest. I used it as a marketing opportunity to make them aware of other vacancies that currently exist. Remains to be seen if they're interested in those, but...
Counselor Catterina?
Yeah, I'm just going to return to, since we're talking about elections, that I would like to see the council take a look at. I have to say, I've only been on the council since 2013, but I do have memories of other years, because I've always been involved in watching council meetings and whatever. But I've never had a person who's a candidate come up and make an announcement of the candidacy from the podium before, and frankly, in my own opinion, as you saw, I don't think that's an appropriate use of this podium. Leave the political stuff outside. Back in, I think it was the late 90s or early 2000s, it was big brouhaha, and this is why we have some of the rules we have for our own council activity, where people were bringing in political signs and their, you know, supporters, and it was not a very good situation here in the council. So, I would discourage people from doing that. Certainly, as candidates, come to the council meetings and speak on things, but just don't be standing there saying, "Hi, I'm Joe Schmo and I'm running for Town Council." I just think it's inappropriate, so. And I may talk with you guys about doing something formal around it, but I would rather not. But I was disappointed, I'll just put it that way. That's it.
Counselor Donovan?
I'd like to echo Counselor Clutier and Johnson's support for the Community Center Committee getting this launched. It really needed to move forward, and it needed to move forward fast. I'm glad that we took that initiative. That should not be understood to mean it's going to happen. This is a blue ribbon committee, and they're going to look very hard at the numbers. And the numbers are going to really be a critical element here, whether it gains the support of the seven members of this Town Council. Because we are in a time where we have a lot of things that are being requested, and we need to establish priorities. So, where this fits in will be really dictated by how good a deal the Scarborough Downs people provide to us. And this message is really going out to the Scarborough Downs people, that it needs to be a really good deal for us. And I think this is the committee to do it. Cell phones, hands-free. I think it starts tomorrow.
Be aware.
So, I have been guilty of using, holding my cellphone 100 times and probably should not. So, I'm very glad this law is in effect, and I hope the police strictly enforce it, because it will definitely improve public safety. So many accidents are caused just because you are distracted. We have so much more distracted driving now than we ever did 20, 30 years ago. The tower is up and it is 184 feet. But I would say that when this was, and I went to all those meetings, public meetings that talked about it, it allowed for, I think, five carriers, so it can significantly improve cellphone coverage in town and raise as much as $100,000 in additional revenue, I think, on an annual basis. So, it's, when I look at that tower, I look at dollars. So, that's how I look at it. So, last, we, there was an open house for South Gate for public officials, and a bunch of us went. It was wonderful. It is a fantastic Avesta facility, and in the course of it, I saw a little family running by in the corridor, and a few days later, I was visiting some friends of mine in South Portland, and they said, "Well, we just had our family, our asylum-seeking family, who they had put up in a little cottage that they had on their property in South Portland, and they were a host family, they just moved into South Gate." And it was, so I think I probably saw that very family, and the report that I got from this South Portland couple, good, good friends, and who have stayed connected to the asylum family now that they're in South Gate, is that they were over the moon with the reception they received by the Scarborough School System. It was quite, quite wonderful. Congratulations, Scarborough Schools.
Counselor Ham?
I just had a couple of comments. One is, I wanted to thank the comments, thank Tom for his comments about his openness and willingness to look at uses and applications of new technology. If we've learned about anything, there's no way we're going to hold that back, okay? Technology is out there already, and people are using it. I've been very impressed at the stuff we've seen over the past day or so, where people have been working on it, you know, our own John Clutier and others in the community. And I think it will speak volumes to the community if and when we share those things with the community and are more open with the data. We fell behind the eight ball, I think, here early on, and I'm not pointing fingers, but I think we've been racing to catch up and get back out in front of this thing. And I hope and believe that we're finally at that point where we are beginning to trust motives and we'll get the data out there and help to do some of the analysis that people have been asking for, and close the loop on this thing, get it behind us. I think the sooner we do that, the easier it's going to be for everyone, and I think that will help us not only as a council, but also as a town. And I think this is a good, a good lesson for us in terms of how to work together more effectively. I also attended the housing tour at South Gate, and it was really very impressive. I'll echo the comments that Counselor Donovan made. I was struck at how well renovated the building was, how closely they fulfilled the, you know, the historic status of the building. I mean, really incredible work. And it had a very nice feel to it, so kudos to all those folks at Avesta and all the work they've done. I do have questions, though, and those are continuing questions that we have. We just don't have the supply of affordable housing. You know, that's getting, becoming more critical now with the effects of the revale on a lot of people. And I'd like to see, you know, more data on, you know, how do we really balance needs that are here with other needs? I know that we tend to be need-based in terms of the folks with the greatest need getting placed, but I'd also like to see how well are we placing people who are in Scarborough, you know, our own folks that are right here? And I think we ought to be taking care of them as well, not to the exclusion of other needs at all. And otherwise, I, you know, I think that was a good meeting, and I appreciate the comments and the general tone of it. I do take issue with what G.M. Reece said about someone talking about current issues and politics. I stood at that podium last year on September 5th and did the same thing. My comment was at the end, though. You know, I talked about issues, and then at the end, I said that I was running, so it was really nothing to do about it. So, I just, I just think we've had a lot of experiences with situations where we put a lot of pressure on curtailing people that want to exercise their First Amendment rights. And I think we've had some really prominent examples of those, having to do with certain ordinances which shall remain unnamed. So, I think we need to kind of, let's be real about that and make sure we're balancing, you know, needs for people to talk about current issues with, you know, what the Constitution provides for us. Thank you.
And I'll kind of close out. I don't usually say a lot, two things, one kind of on a positive note, one not so much. The first would be, kind of echo the ad hoc committee, but from a different perspective. These folks that have stepped forward are going to be doing a lot of work in a short period of time, and I'm just amazed that we even said, and we reached out, we actually thought that we, everybody wouldn't be able to do it. The fact that everybody on the list agreed to do it, I think, just speaks volumes about the community and trying to give back, and so, that's a real positive. The second thing that's really hit me is I have a, our youngest has left home and gone to college, but boy, I tell you, for all the parents out there and students, vaping has become a huge issue. I know it was a huge issue in the senior class. I talked to someone who has a child in the Brunswick School System, the intermediate, whatever the word is, the...
Intermediate?
Intermediate schools, they're doing it in the bathrooms, but it's, it is a scary thing. So, I don't know, I don't know how involved the community is in that, but we need to reach the youth, because it's almost epidemic. It's scary. So, on that nut, on that cherry note. Are we ready to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, everybody. Vote, everybody in favor? Thank you, everybody. Good night.